Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Please take a seat. Mr. City Clerk, calling the meeting to order.
Commissioner Steveson. Commissioner Iskara.
Here.
Commissioner Joseph.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lama is absent. Mayor Svechny?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, great. So we have a few changes to our agenda or some movement. There has been a request to move to B, to the beginning, and then to C, D, and E at the end after the discussion items. Can I get a motion to approve that?
No motion, Mayor.
We don't need it? Oh, then it's fine. Okay. Let's go.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is to be a police department promotional ceremony. Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor, elected officials, Mr. Manager. Moments like today are very proud moments for me as a police chief, for the manager's office, and our elected officials. So first, I would like to thank our elected officials and our city manager for always supporting the police department, and we're very lucky to have each and every one of you. Thank you. I also would like to thank our neighboring agencies, all our brothers and sisters in Blueback, standing and sitting. Thank you for coming today and show of support. Really means a lot. Thank you for being here. So I'm gonna start off by calling up First Assistant Chief Luke Plisa. So ladies and gentlemen, it is with great pride and honor that I stand before you today to announce a significant and well-deserved promotion within our Sunny Isles Beach Police Department. With the full support of our command staff and the city manager's office, I'm delighted to promote Lieutenant Luke Plisa to the esteemed position of Assistant Chief of Police. I have had the privilege of working alongside Luke for the past eighteen years. Since joining our police department in 2005, Luke has consistently demonstrated unwavering dedication and commitment to our community. His hard work, integrity, and leadership have been exemplary, and he has been an integral part of our team, always striving to enhance the safety and well-being of our residents. Luke's journey within our department has been marked by his exceptional service and relentless pursuit of excellence. He has not only upheld the highest standards of our profession, but has also inspired those around him to do the same. His promotion to Assistant Chief of Police is a testament to his outstanding contributions and steadfast devotion to our mission. Please join me in congratulating Assistant Chief of Police Luke Plisa on this well-deserved advancement. We are confident that he will continue to serve our community with the same passion and commitment that has defined his career. Ready for you at the office? Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Luke Plisa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support.
Affirm that I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Both foreign and domestic.
Both foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And that I am entitled to hold office.
And that I am entitled to hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
All duties.
All duties.
Of the office of Assistant Chief of Police.
Of the office of Assistant Chief of Police.
Of which I am about to enter.
Of which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'm gonna ask them to just step aside. We're gonna call everybody up one by one, and at the end, we're gonna pin the badges. So next, I would like to call up Lieutenant Melissa Poro. Again, it is with great happiness and pride that I stand before you today to announce a historic milestone for the Sunny Isles Beach Police Department. We are celebrating the promotion of our first female police lieutenant promoted from within our ranks, Lieutenant Melissa Poro. Lieutenant Poro's journey with our department has been nothing short of remarkable. She began her career as the agency's first female police recruit, breaking barriers and paving the way for future generations. Throughout her time with us, she has demonstrated unwavering dedication and commitment to the Sunny Isles Beach community, consistently upholding the highest standards of our profession. This promotion is not only a testament to Lieutenant Poro's exceptional service and leadership, but also marks another significant achievement. She becomes the first female command staff member under my leadership. Her hard work, integrity, and perseverance have earned her this well-deserved recognition. Please join me in congratulating Lieutenant Melissa Poro on this historic and well-deserved achievement. Lieutenant William Howell. We all know him as Bill, so if I say Bill. So. Again, thank you for gathering here today as we celebrate another significant milestone in the career of an exceptional individual, Lieutenant Bill Howell. Today, we honor not just a promotion, but the remarkable journey of a person who has dedicated his life to the Sunny Isles Beach Police Department. Lieutenant Howell is not only a respected officer, but also a founding member of the Sunny Isles Beach Police Department. Twenty-six years. His commitment and contributions have been foundational in shaping our police force into the esteemed institution it is today. From the very inception of our department, Lieutenant Howell's integrity and unwavering dedication have been evident. Lieutenant Howell, your promotion is not just a recognition of your achievements, but also a symbol of the high standards and values that you uphold. I am immensely proud of you and grateful for your continued service and leadership. Congratulations, Bill. Your legacy within the Sunny Isles Beach Police Department and our community is profound. We look forward to your continued contributions in your new role. Okay, you all would think this would be the best for last, but you second to last, so Lieutenant Javier Estevez, come on down. Today, we gather to celebrate a remarkable achievement in the career of one of our finest, Javier Estevez. As we all know, Javier has consistently demonstrated exceptional dedication, leadership, and unwavering commitment to excellence. His promotion to Lieutenant is not just a testament to his hard work, but also to his character and the respect he commands amongst his peers. In his new role as Lieutenant of Investigations, I have no doubt that Javier will continue to exceed our expectations. He will bring fresh perspectives and innovative ideas that will drive our team forward. His promotion is not just a recognition of his past achievements, but also an investment in our future. Javier, congratulations on this well-deserved promotion. We are incredibly proud of you and excited to see the positive impact you'll continue to make, and on a personal note, I'm very proud of you. Lastly, Sergeant Gino Alfonso. It's with great pride that we recognize Gino Alfonso on his well-deserved promotion to Sergeant. Gino has demonstrated exceptional dedication, leadership, and professionalism in every task he has undertaken. His commitment to excellence, unwavering integrity, and tireless work ethic have made a significant impact on our team and our community. Gino's ability to aspire and lead by example has earned him respect and admiration of his peers and superiors alike. As Gino steps into this new role, we have no doubt that he'll continue to excel and bring us and bring his unique strengths to the forefront. His promotion to Sergeant is not just a recognition of his past accomplishments, but also a testament to his potential for future success. Gino, congratulations. We're all incredibly proud of you and excited to see the positive influence that you undoubtedly bring to your new position. I just wanna close by saying that I am truly blessed to have sergeants, command staff, officers, neighboring agencies that I call my brothers and sisters, supporting me, behind me, and the reason why Sunny Isles is successful is because everybody in this room, along with our residents, is honored to serve you. I'm honored to serve you. So we can do the badge pinning now.
If I could get the commission to come down to take a photo, please. We're just gonna give everyone a minute who wants to go out there, and we do have, I believe, donuts. Refreshments. I think they are donuts, no? Oh, bund cakes, okay. Fancy donuts. Okay, in the interest of time, we're gonna go on to our next item. Two A, which is a presentation of the emergency response by Miami-Dade County. Chief Hall, if you wanted to come up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I have an, also, our deputy chief is also here. We had a trouble parking. Oh, he's here. So I don't know if you wanna do this jointly, or you...
Hello, everyone. Deputy Chief Danny Cordeso, I'm sorry I walked in late, trouble finding parking. Was there a question posed already?
No.
Not yet. So Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Mayor, at our last workshop, there was some questions regarding our emergency response. So I've had conversations with the chief and deputy chief, and I asked them to come in and just give us an update and overview of the services that they provide to us, the great services, I would say, that they provide to us, and thank them for their service and the presentation for us.
Thank you.
So my name is Shanti Hall. I'm the Chief of Emergency Medical Services for Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. Thank you for asking us in today. I know that you recently had your service delivery presentation, so this is, you know, the information we have is very similar to that. It's, we do have, you have your own fire station here in Sunny Isles Beach, which not a lot of communities do. So it's a tremendous advantage to have that here, is you have your own station, which has excellent response times. They average about seven minutes to all incidents. And that's, that's pretty impressive when you consider all things. So we, we stand by the quality of our services here, and honestly, I'm mostly here to answer your questions. This isn't for me to do a presentation about our services, like I said, that was given to you in your service delivery presentation, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. City Manager, if you want to start it off as far as what the, based on the direction you got, or would you like each commissioner to ask specific questions? What would make this more...
Right. You can have, I've had discussions with the chief and deputy, so I understand the services, and there was no real questions or concerns that I had, so really, it's, it's up to the commissioners if they have questions.
Okay, so does anyone in the commission have questions? Please.
I'll go first, if you don't mind.
Of course.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Great. Good afternoon.
So my first question, and we've had presentations prior to your being here today, from other ambulance services telling us why there's a need to have another ambulance in Sunny Isles. Do you find that you require another ambulance, or is the number that you currently have, and regarding the number of calls and all, do you feel that there's a need for another ambulance in Sunny Isles?
So from our perspective and our data, we don't feel that way. Of course, you know, you, as a city, when you review the information that we give you, you know, you may determine that you want additional services or extra services, but, you know, if we saw slower response times, in other words, if you, we, you know, weren't able to get to your calls in a timely manner because we're running so many other calls, I would say so. But, you know, the seven-minute response time is an excellent response time. And we also look at, you know, other stations having to respond here, which is relatively low. So it's about twenty-one percent of all your calls are a neighboring station. And again, those stations are really close. Like, you have another station, Station 21, is one mile away. So we have multiple stations within your area that are, that are very close. And honestly, that's one of the best things about Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, is our numbers, is that we have so many resources. So it isn't just your dedicated station, but we have multiple resources all around you to be able to back that up. So when you have Miami-Dade Fire Rescue here, you don't just have your fire station. You have many, many fire stations with many resources all around. And the other thing I'll say about that is that we have very fixed and regulated staffing. So all of our units have mandatory minimum staffing with mandatory qualifications. There's not any other organizations out there that have that behind them. In other words, the ability to staff with the proper qualifications one hundred percent of the time.
Right. Okay, so just as a follow-up to that question. So if there, and going on what you said, that we now have in Sunny Isles more than adequate ambulance response to any type of need right now? Or if someone in a high-rise has a cardiac arrest, having another ambulance from another service would probably not add anything additional to the response time? You know, to cut down on response time?
So we're the only provider that's in the 911 system. So what's complicated is if you have other providers, they can't use the 911 system. So there would have to be some other system, and I think that that confuses residents, and visitors especially, about who your provider is. And the fact is, is that we, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue is your service provider. And we are the only service provider that comes through the 911 system. So, you know, I, I have no problem with other, I know that, you know, there's volunteer ambulance services, which, by the way, we have excellent relationships with. We are, you know, able to coordinate with them perfectly well when that need arises. But those services have to be requested of them directly, not through the 911 system. So, you know, in terms of your needs here, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue has a lot of options available on the table. So one of the things that's available is we could do a needs assessment with you, and we could really do a deep dive into any potential needs that you feel are not being met in this community when it comes to emergency medical services. And there are additional options that could be on the table that we can discuss. And, and we're absolutely open to that. But in terms of other providers, you, you only have one 911 provider, and that's Miami-Dade Fire Rescue.
Right. Okay. So one other question regarding, I've been pushing for more speed humps in Golden Shores. And originally, we were told that that wasn't possible because your vehicles, your trucks, don't react well to the speed humps that are currently in Golden Shores. Is that the case?
So that's not my area of expertise. I can only tell you that I personally don't enjoy speed bumps. But, you know, aside from my personal feelings about speed bumps, I also recognize the value of them for safety purposes. But I think Chief Cordeso might have more information on that.
Sure. So for that conversation, we'd refer you to our Fire Prevention Division, and looking at the fire code and the requirements of the speed humps, dimensions and whatnot, I don't see why that wouldn't be a possibility with further conversation with fire prevention. Just to put a few numbers to some of what Chief Hall was talking about. The city of Sunny Isles is averaging twenty-seven hundred medical calls a year. Okay, that's excluding fires, excluding all the other type of responses, twenty-seven hundred. So that's about seven point four calls per day, which, as you mentioned, with an average of a seven-minute response time, which is probably slightly faster than our county-wide average, despite the traffic and, and population density here in the city. When it comes to another metric we look at to determine additional service, especially that of an ambulance or a rescue truck, is, is transport volume, right? So how many people are actually being taken to the hospital? In calendar year 2023, and, and so far this year, you're tracking along the same lines, there were thirteen hundred transports, which averages about three point five per day. So your main fire station, Station 10, Rescue 10, that's more than adequate. I mean, they're more than capable of conducting that. And just getting back to another, another number that was thrown out there, a twenty-some-odd percent of other units running calls in your municipality, that's for a combination of factors, but let's, let's not forget that the southern end of your city actually sits within the first due response area of a different fire station. So that accounts for some of those numbers as well. So the call volume in general doesn't support additional service. The transport volume is, is more than adequately being handled currently. And to your specific question on a cardiac arrest, understand that to a cardiac arrest, we dispatch seven people minimum, right? So if you had a cardiac arrest across the street from Station 10, or anywhere in Station 10's response area, you would get Ladder 10, or Engine 10, and Rescue 10 responding with seven personnel, of which, depending on the staffing matrix that day, could be seven paramedics. You know, that level of care is, is quite frankly unmatched by any of the other providers. I, I hope that answers your question, and I'm here for any others.
More, more than adequate. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question? Please, go ahead.
The, the seven-minute response time, that's, that's averaging, including the, by the fire department that, fire station that's not in Sunny Isles? That's an average for everything?
For everything, yes.
Okay. And I believe, you just said something that I don't think I knew, so I just wanna make sure I understood it properly. The, the southern, I'm bad with directions, so yeah, the southern part, which is, for us, it's Arlen House. So the station that is responsive to the south, it would be the Hollover Station, not, not the, not the...
So it doesn't go by your city limits, it goes by the closest station? So I believe that's what you're saying, is that Hollover Station?
Yeah, so I referenced the map before coming here, and I can't tell you the exact streets because it didn't have the map, didn't have that level of detail.
It wouldn't make a difference to me anyway, because I'm very bad with that.
Right, but it, it looked like the, let's call it, the southern fifteen percent or so of the city resides within the Hollover Station's first due area, because they happen to be closer to, to that part of the city.
I didn't know that. So that, and that makes sense with the twenty percent. Technically, it's outside, but it's, they're just doing their job. I mean...
Yes, I mean, we, we respond, and in fact, to medical calls, we dispatch by GPS. So we do not necessarily take in consideration, per se, what fire station is within a particular municipality. When that call comes in, our dispatchers look by, by GPS location, identify the closest possible unit to that call, and we begin with that as a dispatch. And the purpose of that is to make sure that response time is as short as possible.
And lastly, thank you for that. And lastly, I recall the, the report that we get every year. There, there's like a satisfaction survey that, that's part of that. If I remember correctly, it was very high ratings, like in the, like in the ninety-something percentile, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, because I didn't look at it before I came here today.
Yes, that, that's correct. We, we issue surveys to practically, I forget what the exact percentage is, of everyone that's transported to the hospital. And we enjoy countywide, I didn't bring your municipality-specific report, but I know it was provided recently, what the, the response rate is, but we enjoy a four, high four-point-something out of five, out of a possible five points, really across the board.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions. I just wanted to tell you, you, you guys do a fantastic job, and I really thank you for your service. So keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have just a quick question.
Go ahead.
Just for clarification. So obviously, the fire truck and the ambulance are two different things. When... When the ambulance is dispatched, regarding where, which hospital they go to, right now, what, what is the closest, or rather, what is the hospital that they have to go to?
Okay, so-
How does that work, basically?
We have an actual, a, an entire protocol that's our transport protocol, which is exactly what, what we follow. Our protocol states that any stable patient, whether ALS or BLS, so you can have an AL, advanced life support patient, that if they're reasonably stable and any basic life support patient, they go to the closest appropriate hospital. And by appropriate, and we specify this, that can be many different factors that qualifies as appropriate, which can be patient choice or physician choice. Our, our protocol is very broadly accepts a patient's choice in hospital. The only exception to that is certain types of calls must go to certain types of hospitals. So for example, a trauma patient that is a trauma alert patient, that meets the state criteria as a trauma alert, must go to a trauma center. So for example, Mount Sinai is not a trauma center. So if you have, we have a trauma patient, it does not matter how much they really want to go to Mount Sinai, they must go to a trauma center. So that, when, when somebody is denied going to the clo, to the hospital that we say that they have to go to, in most cases, it is because, for example, a cardiac alert must go to a cardiac alert center. So there's certain-
And which one is that, the closest one to here? Which one is that?
So for cardiac, you actually have both. Both Aventura and Mount Sinai are cardiac centers. So we, you know, in those cases, you would have a choice. But like trauma, for example, there's, there's no choice. We can't, by state law, we cannot take a patient to the wrong place. And if by chance we did that, if we, you know, the patient insisted and we took them to Mount Sinai, the first thing Mount Sinai would do when we got there would be say, to say, we can't accept that patient. That's a trauma patient, we cannot accept that patient. And we would have to then turn around and take them to the correct hospital. So if, if somebody goes on their own to Mount Sinai and they're a trauma patient, then Mount Sinai would have to transfer that patient to a proper trauma center. They're not, they don't, they're, they don't meet that, they don't have that capability. So aside from certain situations like that, I'll take it again, stroke, a stroke center. We have comprehensive and primary stroke centers. If somebody meets the criteria where they need to go to a comprehensive stroke center, they must go to a comprehensive stroke center. Aside from that, the vast majority of calls, we take patients to the hospital that they want to go to.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming here. I know you just did the report for us, it was outstanding, so we appreciate you taking the time, and of course, all the service to the community.
Thank you. Again, we appreciate everything you do.
No, I just want to say on behalf of our mayor and the fire chief, and of course, ourselves, you know, we thank you for the privilege to serve your city. We're, we're extremely ecstatic that we're doing so in a way that, you know, exceeds all expectations, and will continue to do so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, Mr. City Clerk, so that, which, we're going to discussion items first, correct?
We're going to discussion items.
Okay, thank you. Three A then?
Three A is a discussion regarding a request from the SIB school.
Honorable Mayor and Commission, each year through, based on our joint use agreement that we have with the school, the CCS director and the principal meet over the summer, and they discuss the schedule, the scheduled needs of both entities, and come up with a calendar of everything that they need for the, all of the facilities covered in the joint use agreement. This past summer, the meeting resulted in, I don't have all the dates, okay. So for their athletic program, their after-school athletic program, they need our facility for volleyball and for soccer, so that the children can have competitive, you know, they play other schools. And so the facility for us, our needs, is that we needed it for our programming. So the school is agreeable to using it in the morning before we open, so they would amend their request to do it before we open, so that they can still have volleyball for the girls, soccer for the boys. This is exactly what volleyball did last year.
Okay.
So we're just looking for some direction this year.
All right, is there a question or discussion from the commission? No?
I have a question. This agreement never came before us before, right?
Correct, it normally does not.
So why are you guys looking for us to approve it now?
Because we've had some conversations where there is, we're getting a little more strict with how we enforce the joint use agreement.
Okay, and now if they're gonna use it at seven in the morning, we still have to open?
We open, we have stuff there at that time anyways.
We, you, we usually have it, so there is no new thing, new for this?
There would not be any additional, there would not be any additional cost to us to open it for them. We open it, we let them in, we lock it, the general public cannot get in. The difference is, they're now paying for that time. So through the joint use agreement, we calculate every hour of the time that they use, the percentage of the facility that they use, and then we bill them for it.
Okay, so why don't we bill them for this?
We would. No, we totally would.
Oh, we would?
Yep. This is really just kind of letting you all know that this is what we want to agree to with the school this year, for this upcoming school year.
It's not affecting our services, like our programs or nothing?
It would not. So the original request would, because they wanted the soccer field.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Cannot give up our soccer field.
Correct, yeah, exactly.
So working with them, we've come up with this alternate schedule.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
So if the school now, which we're discussing, changing, you know, converting it to a charter, this would not be necessary?
I could not even contemplate that at this time. That is so far undefined right now. I couldn't answer that.
Well, let's say-
But right now, we have a joint use agreement with Miami-Dade County Public Schools.
But if, if the school was currently a charter, this would not be necessary, correct?
It depends on who the charter, who runs the charter.
Miami-Dade would be out of it, wouldn't it? Wouldn't it?
No, no, they would not.
No.
So that's something we probably can cover in the, the other item, but-
Correct.
No, you, you, it would be obsolete to a certain extent, depending on what would occur, but you'd have to unravel this agreement to an extent or revise it. But the school board was, would always be involved.
Okay. Thank you.
Susan, thank you for negotiating with them and getting them to do the right thing, so. All right, do you need any additional direction to put this on, or later?
No, we don't.
Okay.
I just wanted to comment that, I mean, initially, I was concerned about the overlapping, but I'm, I'm okay with the, I'm okay with it.
Okay, next item, Maricio.
Next item is three B, a discussion regarding charter school.
Mayor, members of the commission, I've been, I have been approached by a parent group to further discuss the possibility of a conversion of our charter school. So initially, in my discussions, we've done some research back and forth, and I spoke to a consultant who gave us some additional information regarding the steps that it would take to become a charter school, which, as I shared with you, is very involved. The city itself cannot be an applicant for a charter school. So the parent group has established a 501(c)(3) that they are proposing to be the applicant. The suggestion by the parent group is that the city participate in the processing of the next steps of the application, which would include voting and those other issues surrounding the application to be a charter school, which again, cannot be from the city. So in some of my initial research, it was determined that the possibility for a consultant or someone to assist with this would be somewhere between forty to fifty thousand. It was also suggested that the possibility of the school could be a municipal charter school. But in further research, it was determined that the charter schools that we were discussing, for example, Pembroke Pines and ACIS in Aventura, started off as a charter school initially. So there's a big differentiation between starting a charter school and converting an existing school to a charter school. So at this point, I'm at the point where I need some direction from you all as to the next steps, if you're interested in pursuing this further. And there's also some legalities that I have discussed back and forth with the city attorney regarding the, the issue and the potential. So based on that, that's why I brought it forward-
Okay.
-for more discussion.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. City Manager. So just to, so that there is clarification, because this is a very big conversation, I wanted to have the city attorney explain to us, you know, what would be the, the process and, and the legalities that's, that are associated with it.
Well, as you can imagine, charter schools are heavily regulated by the state. There's, as the city manager indicated, there are two types of charter schools. There's, well, there's actually more, but the two primary are new charter school and then conversion. So what you'd be discussing and what you'd be looking at here would be a conversion. The Florida Legislature specifically excluded municipalities to be involved with conversion. You can, you can start a new charter school, but you can't be involved in a conversion. So that's one big limitation there. And it is, as the city manager said, quite an onerous process. So it would be upon the applicant to go through the statutory steps, which are, again, onerous. For example, one cannot apply unless they go through state training to apply. There's a variety of steps you have to go through. And then you also have to look at the way the school became a school. If you recall, possibly back in two thousand and five, I believe, city had attempted to obtain the property by eminent domain, which they could not do. The school board had to do that. At one point, it was suggested that the city pay for the eminent domain, although the vehicle would be the school board, that the school board took that potential to the attorney general of the state, and the attorney general said they could not do that. So in lieu of that, you entered into a slew of ILAs, which I believe ultimately, the city paid twelve point one-two-five million dollars towards the building of the school. And then ultimately, as the deputy city manager alluded to, we have also an existing joint use agreement, which is a minimum forty-year agreement with mandatory ten-year renewals thereafter with no termination clause. So you'd have to sort of figure out as well how to unwind these things and what cost that would be to the city, if any, because there was sort of joint contributions. I think the school board minimum contributed ten million to the school, to, to the creation of the school, but I'm sure it was more than that. So we'd have to, again, unwind those agreements, and we can only do that with the consent of the school board. Part of the process as well is that the applicant, your sponsor, you as the applicant, not you, but whoever is applying, the sponsor is necessarily the district, the, the school district. So they have to approve, obviously, of it. And, you know, there may be some challenges there, it is an A school. There are things there that, you know, may be a factor. But from a legal standpoint, there's a lot of uncertainty, well, the, I shouldn't say that. The certainty is, we can't be involved directly. And the uncertainties deal with the agreements that have already been in place, to your point, Commissioner. It's kind of an open question as to what the ramifications would be if it gets that far. And there is a whole statutory process that it can get into also with the balloting that has to be administered by the school district through the school and so on and so forth. But there's, there's a lot of steps you have to go through, which, you know, seemingly are not cheap necessarily. So those are things you have to consider as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, so does anyone want to ask questions or say anything?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Please.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not very familiar, I'm barely familiar with, with this process, right? So, but I did read the joint use agreement, and the most basic summary is, the city built Pelican. The Miami-Dade County Public Schools built the building, for the school building, and they're allowed to use some of our facilities during school hours. And we're allowed to use some of their facilities during non-school hours. That's how we could use the cafeteria for certain things and whatnot. So there's some mutual usage there. So if, if we were to go this route, you, you mentioned it was like ten million dollars, that we're gonna call it ten million, whatever it costs to actually build a school?
Well, it was, it was in excess, I think, twenty-five or twenty-six million dollars. Our contribution was twelve point one-two-five. I'm sure the school board, they picked up the rest, so.
Okay, so whatever the number is, I guess, I guess my question is, you know, are we taking, are we taking ownership? Are we, does, there's their compensation for the building itself here, or we're just-
No, so that, well, those are some of the unknowns, but we, we're not involved. So if, if you do choose to go forward with, and it's not you choosing to go forward, it's, you can't start a charter school there. So that, that's, that's clear. You, as the city. Ownership, the school board will always keep ownership. The only way the school board can sell that property or dispose of that property is if it's no longer operated as a school. That's one of the questions they took to the attorney general. So it would have to no longer be a school, and I think we have right of first refusal to possibly purchase. But it would have to, that property would no longer have to be a school in order for the school board to dispose of it. So it's gonna be a school.
So the joint use agreement would survive?
It, not in the form it is now.
Why?
Because of the way it's drafted, it contemplates, it contemplates, it, it would have to be, at the very least, revised. It could pertain to the same, it could have the same provisions, but the document as is doesn't contemplate that being a charter school. And now you're going to insert a private company, nonprofit or otherwise, that's going to be operating the school potentially. So you're adding parties to the operation of the facility, the operation of the curriculum, and so on and so forth. So there's a lot of variables that are gonna change that would make this document almost, like I said before, obsolete to the extent that a lot of what it references won't exist anymore. So at the very least, assuming the school board is on board, pardon the pun, with it, it would have to be heavily revised or unwound in some way. To the extent that there's a financial component to that, that would be up to the school board. And I don't know, again, what the, the true capital outlay was with regards to building the school. I just know that the city's contribution.
Does this require school board approval?
Absolutely. You mean what, the?
If, if the, the nonprofit does its job, right? And I understand that there's voting involved with, with, for some-
Because it's a conversion, fifty percent of the teachers, at least fifty percent of the teachers have to agree. And fifty percent of the parents of the enrolled children have to agree.
So let's say that happens.
Okay, then that gives you the ability to make application, which again, it's tough to get to that point, but you get to an application. That application is, is submitted to the sponsor. The sponsor is the, the school board.
Okay.
So the school board will decide yea or nay on a charter school. If they say no, they have certain things they have to do in writing to actually explain why. But then that can appeal, that can be appealed to the Department of Education up in Tallahassee. But ultimately, the decider of whether that is gonna be a convergent charter school is the school board.
And the fact, you mentioned that because it's an A school, that it presents a challenge. Why is that a challenge?
Well, typically, and it's not necessarily lower-graded schools that necessarily become charter, especially new charters, because new charters are started all the time. But the purpose behind the statute essentially is to augment the existing school system. So I just, from whether it's the school board wanting to, if they have an A school, they don't, you know, obviously, the goal of a charter school would to, would be to also have an A school. Well, you have an A school. Typically, you see conversions being school that may not be doing as well, and you want to ameliorate it and augment what's being offered to the students. That's typically it, but I don't know that the school board would want to give up one of its A schools. I don't know if it affects their averages and so on and so forth, but it's a-
They called it an A school, but it's gone down.
Right, well, the A is provided by the state, so I, I don't know how that, that's graded a certain way for, for the various schools. And I know the district is an A, so I don't know how that affects it. But it's, it's just, it's, it's just more challenging, and I don't know if the school board would have to be agreeable to that. And I don't know how agreeable they would be to give up one of their A schools.
And financially, how would this, well, let's say, you know, all the planets align, the school board says, you can have our A school, have at it. Okay, so financially, how does that work? Because it's not a municipal school, so then how do the monies flow, like what?
That would be the applicant and whoever they choose to run the school. And the costs, there should be no cost to the city, except the unknown variables about unwinding the joint use and then any other ILAs you may have entered into to create the school. the joint use and then any other ILAs you may have entered into to create the school. And I don't know that there would be, but that's something that we'd have to look through and see if there's, and we'd have to consult with the school board to see what their position is on unwinding all that. But from a standpoint of creating the school, there should be no cost to the city, because the city's not involved.
So, if I'm a teacher and I'm getting a paycheck, who's signing my paycheck?
For conversion schools under the statute, so it's a little, so if it was a new school, you have the choice of going to work for the charter school or to continue working for the school board. And you can actually take a leave of absence from the school board, so you don't lose seniority. For conversion school, all employees of the charter school remain public employees unless they choose not to be.
So, so Miami-Dade County Public Schools would continue to sign the paycheck?
That's my understanding, unless they come to some separate agreement with, but they do remain public employees. As to how the payroll is done and so on and so forth, I, I presume they could come into an agreement with whoever's running the school. But that would, again, would be up to the school board.
Okay. So, the money that is allocated per school, I, again, I'm not an expert, so I just, but, but each, each school has its employees, its, its FPNL bill, it's, you know, there's a certain amount of money that I understand, the government dollars, state, well, you know, it comes out of our taxes, we see it on our tax bills, so that gets allocated to a particular school. So, would all of those monies then be shifted? Because it sounds like the school board would still keep some administrative role.
There are some administrative roles they have to keep if their request is. For example, testing assessments and things of that sort remain a school, a school board responsibility. So, there are certain things they do need to keep a hand in, including, there's a list of them, but I'm trying to remember a good example, but certainly assessment is.
If I may, the taxes that they collect in Sonny As, they don't come back to Sonny As, like the whole full amount. It goes to Tallahassee, and then we receive the money, our school, per pupil. So, they receive the money according to what Tallahassee sent per child. So, it's not that we, the, the whole amount that they are collecting from Sonny As is now gonna come back to Sonny As.
No, I understand that, but maybe other stuff, I don't understand that. Because we're a donor, we're a donor county.
Yeah. Tallahassee also doesn't care where the students come from.
So, in the charter school.
Can we just let the attorney finish, please?
Sorry. So, in a charter school, you, you can't charge tuition, right? So, that money would come from the state. The only thing in a conversion school you don't get is the capital outlay money that the state provides to a new school, which would be money towards capital improvements or, you know, the actual construction, which you don't need in a conversion. But ultimately, the cost, back to the original question, should be to the applicant and whoever is chosen to govern the school with regards to actually administering and running the school, the facilities, insurance, you know, all these things.
And liabilities, you know, all of that. So, the city would not be in any way?
No.
Tied into any of that?
No. They, they can't be. But how much the school board retains that, because it is their property, it is their building? So, those are the things they would work out with whoever ends up running the school. But, again, there has to be, the charter that is created for the charter school is actually a joint document between the school board and the applicant and the operator. So, it's kind of like, I don't know, necessarily a tri-party, but there's a lot of variables that come into it. And the application process, you know, we keep referring that, that it's onerous, but you have to provide, again, your full curriculum. You have to, there's all these things you have to provide to the state in order to even apply before you can submit it to the school board. So, there's a lot of legwork that needs to be done beforehand, which, the cost of which is borne by the applicant.
Okay. That's it for now.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
So, are there any representatives of this parent group here today? I know we can't, it's not set up the workshop to have a back and forth, but are there, are there any representatives of the parent group?
We're, th- this is a workshop, so there's no speakers.
No, I understand, but I'm just questioning whether there are.
I don't think they were invited, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Well, maybe they're watching on television.
Yeah. It doesn't matter.
That's part of, part of the direction, I guess, the city manager's looking for is, if it's something, because if, if it is something that, again, the, the city's role is very limited, so I don't know to what extent we wanna go too deep into looking into it, because it's not us doing anything.
What, what, just for clarification, what is our role here right now? And, and why are we even here? I understand a parent group approached the city manager, but what exactly, what was the, the reason for the request? And then if, and then what decision, if, if any, that we make is going to affect anything, if we can't be the applicant?
I guess essentially, the request was for financial support to help support putting together the application and implementing or creating some sort of a voting process to become a potential charter school.
So, it's to pay for them to apply, to help, to, to pay for the costs associated with the application?
Provide some support in that way, yes.
Okay. And, and what was the request, what was the request based on? Why are they asking for this, is my question? What, did they ask you, rather? I don't know what their reasoning is. What was the reasoning they gave you?
They expressed some, I guess, displeasure with the way things were happening at the school. And they said that they had spoken with a number of people that had interest in providing some sort of application for the school to become a municipal charter. So, I explained that I had to go back and do some additional research to find out if this was a viable option. So, in the midst of the different research, it was determined that the municipality could not apply to become a charter school.
Okay.
So, I explained that, and then the request was, you know, if the city could support in any way moving the process forward. And I explained that in order for that to happen, I would have to have the approval by you all as a group.
Okay. But there was no, no.
So, that's kind of where we are now.
There wasn't any specific data that was associated with this, meaning that we want to change the school because?
Not specific to me, no.
Thank you.
And to the extent that there is a request for financial, that, I guess, is some of the direction we would need is, if it's something that you're looking to do, we would have to look into to what extent we can. Because obviously, you don't wanna do an end run on the statute and sort of bypass what the legislature has stated that we're not involved. So, I'm sure there's some parameters that are set that, but we'd have to look into those and define those.
So, what do you mean, that would potentially prohibit us from even doing anything?
Potentially. I mean, for example, if you were to pay for the whole thing and pretty much just do it in an abstention.
Right.
And just have a different applicant, and you're doing an end run on the statute, you can't do that. So, there's obviously an extreme limit that you can't do. To the extent, you know, if it's a little contribution here and there, who knows? But we'd have to look into that. And I guess that's part of the direction the city manager's looking for, to see how far we go into the viability of the city being involved financially to any extent.
Okay.
I have one other question, if you don't mind.
Please, go ahead.
So, was anyone from the parent group, were they given a copy of the conversion information? Just so they know and they were aware of what's involved?
I provided a copy to you all.
No, to the parent group.
Yeah, we can't, we, we, it's a Florida statutory process, so we can't give them legal advice as to what they can or cannot do as a private.
But even so they could see what's involved? Because it's some, it's one thing to have an idea and come to the city, that it may sound like a good idea to convert the school to a charter. But unless they see what we're seeing and what's involved, then they have a different idea of what's, you know, what they're getting into.
Okay.
So, don't you think it's a good idea for them to actually have a copy of what we're?
I don't, I don't know exactly what you're referring to. If it's the statute, is it the statute?
No, it's the conversion charter school information.
That's in our website, yes.
I don't, I, I, I don't know what that.
Alan, it's the attachment to the agenda item, to the agenda.
Oh, so it's, okay, so it's.
They're free to request that, it's public, it, it's.
No, I understand, but do we even know if they know what this is?
I imagine that if they are serious about this, that they know the process. I don't know, but I don't think it's our job to, to tell them.
Because in, in, in all honesty, the group of parents would have to hire folks to do this for them.
Right. We paid someone to do this.
Yeah. So, it could be that they're just coming to us with a good idea, what they think is a good idea, but they haven't, I'm just saying, maybe they haven't actually delved into it.
But the idea of the consultant is precisely to know if it's possible or not, what, like Alan was saying about the ramifications of converting.
Right.
So, it makes sense. I receive dozens of emails in support of this.
Okay, yes. And I've had the same thing. I've had phone calls and emails.
Okay, perfect. So.
But I don't know, the people who are writing to me and calling me, I, I had asked, have they seen a copy of this? And they've told me no.
Well, that I don't know about.
Well, I've asked.
Correct. So, um.
And I've written back and asked.
And right now, I hear a few of the questions being answered, um, that the people were, they were asking, like, for example, the ownership of the building. So, we, the city, they said that the conversion goes through, nobody has to buy the building. The building's always gonna belong to Miami-Dade County Public Schools, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless, I mean, again, based on the Attorney General opinion and everything else.
Correct.
As long as it's a school, the school board has it.
Yeah. And he says here that conversion charter schools are eligible to occupy the school building without rent or payment. Okay. So, it continued being part of the Miami-Dade County Public.
They're eligible, but the school board could charge them, though.
Okay.
It's gonna be, depending on what kind of agreement they would come to.
And I was reading also that all major repairs, the responsible party is also the Miami-Dade County Public Schools.
That's gonna be depending, if they bring in a company to run the school, they could agree separately as to what facilities are gonna be, how they're gonna be taken care of. That's gonna be an agreement between them.
Okay. Perfect, perfect. So, um, the good thing is that what we are discussing right now is actually to find more information, to have answers to all these questions, right? To get the consultants, so we can have the whole idea of what to do and how to do it, and to help our parents, the people that is looking forward to, to have a better education system in our school, in our city, which also is gonna impact property values, et cetera. So, we want to have the answers, and for that, we need the money for the consultant and for the expert.
But we can't, since we cannot be an applicant and actually be part of this school, we also can't do the legwork and give them the tools, the consultants, and the information, because they're gonna rely on that. And if we're wrong for some reason, or our consultant is wrong, that, that consultant was hired for our edification, for our own purposes. So, to the extent that they have to be, they have to get their own consultants, and they have to get their attorneys and so on and so forth to put this package together, because the city can't do that for them.
So, then I have the same question. If we can not provide them anything, so what are we talking about?
It was, I, I'm, I'm just responding to the question.
Because, you know, like, we get consultants all the time. Like, we just spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollar for the park and recreation master plan that was a disaster, and it's three times this. It took over almost two years of not doing anything with the parks, because we were waiting for the consultant to come with a product. So, we had consultant for anything, everything, for the building department, for the police accreditation, et cetera. So, my question is the original one. We want to consider this or not? That, for me, that's a question. So, explore this possibility.
Originally, I believe it came as a request, and for us to determine whether we could or could not be involved, we had to consult with someone, uh, uh, obviously, an expert in the field, and then look at it from a legal standpoint. And now we've come to the conclusion, we can't be the applicant. We can't actually do this for conversion. So, we've sort of gotten our answer. That's why going forward, it's not the city that would be doing it, it would be the applicant. And at that point, at the city, that consultant was purely for our own education, so that we would know what our role can or cannot be.
So, that's this one right now, what we are asking for?
That's part of it, right. That's the consultant on, on that side, and then mine on the legal as well.
Well, I'm totally fine with getting the consultant to get all the information, legally, financially, what is it that the city can and what is it that the city can not do?
Well, we already, that, that we already have.
So, we have all the answers already?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
The consultant agrees as well. From a legal standpoint, we cannot do a conversion school, and the statute's pretty clear.
Okay. So, is anything that the city can do to help this process move forward?
Not through the process itself. Again, whenever there's a municipal purpose, if you can identify a municipal purpose, you know, you can use your taxpayer funds to contribute. But, again, you'd possibly, you'd have to consider that we'd have to really, to the extent you consider giving money, we'd have to really get a lot of the financials, guarantees, and things of that sort, because you'd be giving money to an organization, a private organization, that you'd have no control over.
Okay.
So, you'd have to sort of really do your homework just to be able to, and, and not saying you can't do that, but we just have to be careful, because the, unfortunately, with charter schools, the, I mean, some start to process and it doesn't happen. So, if you contribute money and it doesn't happen, then, you know, that money's gone.
Correct.
So, those are things that, those are all decisions you have to make.
Now, who verifies the track record of this organization?
The school board does.
I, I have another question. So, we're talking about municipal purpose. The charter school that you mentioned before, like ACES in Aventura, for example, they provide after school to all the children of the school. And the city, because it's a municipal charter school, help with that, and it's free of charge. So, if we were gonna convert into charter school, and we can provide after, aftercare, after school to all the children in the school for free, then that's a municipal purpose?
Right. But you're not running the school.
We're not gonna be running the school.
No, no. The after, aftercare, after school hours, completely.
But then we'd be paying for it.
Correct.
So, why would we pay a private, a private entity to do that?
No, 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 no. Then you don't get me. To provide the after school for all the children.
Yeah, but in Aventura, that's their charter school. It's a municipal charter. This would not be a municipal charter.
I understand. The after school, we are providing it right now as it is. And it's, and it's not enough for all the children that they are wanting to do.
If we wanted to provide free aftercare for the entire school, we could do that now if we wanted to.
Exactly.
We don't need it to convert to a charter, is my point.
Well, and the idea will be to convert so we can use the facilities like we have, et cetera.
Use the facilities now.
No, they have to approve it, the Miami-Dade County Public Schools, they need to approve everything.
They'd have to approve it also, because they own the building.
Correct.
So, they'd have to approve it even if it was a charter. We'd still have to get some kind of agreement together. That's why when I mentioned with the joint use agreement, there would have to be revisions, because it doesn't contemplate the charter school, but you're adding parties in there. So, you could accomplish that, but not as, not just because it's a charter school. You could do that now, because you can agree.
Yeah, yeah, correct. Yeah. Who is the board of the charter school? If it becomes a charter school, who's gonna be making the final decisions for the school?
They, well, there's, it's actually two, so there's two entities, there's two legal entities. One that operates the school, and then the board. And the board would be chosen by, the applicant has to provide all that information with the application as to who the board is gonna be, who, each member, each member has to make certain certifications. There's training involved, there's all these things, and they have to identify who each board member would be.
Now, at what point would we get to see that? Where, at that point, would we still be in the acceptance process, or that would be past us?
We're not part of this at all.
Yeah, so we're not part of this at all.
No. So, the school board, all that information would be submitted to the sponsor, which is the school board.
Right.
Who would be ultimately the entity that would make a decision on the charter.
Okay. So, where, where this cover sheet says that the implications are estimated to be approximately one to two million a year to our budget, where is that coming from?
That's if you were actually a municipal charter school.
Okay. But this is not what that would be?
No, because we can't. At the time, that, that is, if I, is that the consultant's letter? Okay. That was just a summary of basically what charter schools are.
Okay.
So, she wasn't answering any specific questions. She was just doing a summary of what charter schools.
Okay. So, this has no financial ramifications to the city?
It, it, right, it can't, because we can't apply. That would, that would come into play. So, if you were a municipal charter school, and I'm sure Aventura could attest to it if you talk to them, that, you know, you have to, you're gonna have to pay for a lot of things, you know, so.
Correct.
Those are things, you know, the operations and so on and so forth. So, then it becomes a costly endeavor.
So, again, the, the parent group, are they aware of the cost, or?
I have no idea.
Okay. So, there are a lot of variables that.
Okay.
And that's why, I mean, again, not to give them advice, but that's why the applicant needs to probably have their own consultants and attorneys and so on and so forth, so they can get this information, so they know, because it's something they're gonna have to be walked through to make application, because there's a lot of pitfalls and things you have to interpret and find out from, and you have to work with the school board. interpret and find out from, and you have to work with the school board.
So, if there's a mistake to be made in doing the conversion, it wouldn't be our mistake?
No, 'cause we wouldn't be involved.
We wouldn't be involved. Uh, in, in most cases, anything having to do with a charter school, uh, it's, they're, a private charter school company gets involved in it.
Right.
So, I'm not giving them advice, but that's probably who they would partner with to be able to do this. So, for the purposes of giving direction to the manager, and I wanna say thank you, um, to the city manager for putting this on here, because, um, it just goes to show that you're responsive to, to the residents, and so that's appreciated. What information, or what, what is it that you need from us, if anything?
Well, I think if you have any direction, if you want me to move forward, I mean, based on my discussions with legal, it's understood that the municipality cannot participate.
Right.
So, really, I guess it's incumbent upon the, uh, group of parents to move the item forward.
Okay. All right.
Help them explore this. We can, as the city, we cannot explore this, even if that's what the residents, they want.
Right, we can't be their consultant on them starting, you, you can't be giving them, 'cause essentially, you're giving them legal advice on how to proceed, and you'd be expending staff time and money and so on and so forth to help this private nonprofit to apply, and that would involve us in the process.
Okay. Um, Mauricio, do we have the-
But I wish everyone luck.
Thank you. Do we have the proclamation ready for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, we're going back to, and, and thank you for your patience. All right, we're going back to, to C.
Okay.
So-
So, yes.
So, C is the proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Okay.
You wanna read the proclamation yourself, or you want me to read it?
Uh, I wanna read something really quick, and then I wanna read the proclamation, and then we'll come down to take a picture, and so, thank you again for being here. I wanted to read this, and, and, and thank you for, for partnering with us for so many years. So, the Mystic Force Foundation was founded in two thousand and eight by Dr. Stephen and Sylvia Vanny after their then-four-year-old son, Salvatore, was diagnosed with stage-four neuroblastoma cancer. Stephen and Sylvia realized how little funding there was for childhood cancer research when they were told that Sal had a twenty percent chance to live five years. Knowing that they had to do something immediately, they opened the foundation and started a lab at the University of Miami specifically for childhood cancer research. They remain committed to funding research to find less toxic, more effective treatments for children battling cancer, and ultimately to find a cure for all childhood cancers. And that's a picture of Sal. I don't know if people on, on TV can see it. And, and this is the blurb that's, that's about him. "After having been a trailblazer in his own fight against childhood cancer, Sal's spirit remains ever-present in everything that they do. Having had Sal's cancer cells immortalized, he continues to inspire as he lives on in laboratories across the country to help find a cure for chi- for children like him." I'd like to read the proclamation. "Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, with the average age of diagnosis being six years old, and whereas one in two-hundred-and-eighty-five children in the United States will be diagnosed by their twentieth birthday, and whereas forty-six children per day, or one, sixteen-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety children per year, are di- are diagnosed with cancer in the U.S., and whereas eighty percent of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late with metastatic disease, and on average, there's been a zero-point-six percent increase in incidence per year since the mid-nineteen-seventies, resulting in an overall incidence increase of twenty-four percent over the last forty years. And whereas two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, and one-quarter being classified as severe to life-threatening. And whereas approximately one-half of childhood cancer family, families rate the associated financial toxicity, toxicity due to out-of-pocket expenses as considerable to severe. And whereas in the last thirty years, only six new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer. And whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out. And whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. And whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer, and whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. And whereas the city of Sunny Hills Beach recognizes the devastating impact that this disease has on members of our community and the importance of increased research on childhood cancer. And whereas this month, we recognize that these burdens are shared by countless dedicated healthcare professionals, organizations, charities, and parents, parent advi- advocacy groups, which support pa- patients and families by offering advice, encouragement, hope, and financial assistance, and work tirelessly to lift the spirits of children suffering from camp, from cancer. Now therefore I, the Vice President as Mayor, and on behalf of the City Commission of the City, City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim September two thousand and twenty-four as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month." I'm gonna bring this down. We can come down.
That's a tough one.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
God bless everyone.
Mauricio?
Here, we can do, uh, the other proclamation, two D, for Day of Remembrance of the October seventh massacre and subsequent Gaza War.
Okay, perfect, please.
Okay, I'm just gonna read it. "Whereas on October seventh of this year, a tragic massacre and subsequent conflict erupted, marking a dark chapter in the history of Israel, the city of Sunny Hills Beach stands in solidarity with the people of Israel as they endured the pain of this violent incursion in the ongoing war against Hamas. And whereas the city is committed to honoring the memory of the brave servicemen and women who have sacrificed their life in defense of Israel, as well as the innocent civilians who were brutally murdered during this horrific attack, and whereas the grief and sorrow felt by our community and by the people around the world can and must be transformed into a powerful force for good, it is in the spirit of resilience and unity that we gather to remember and to take action, affirming that love is stronger than hate, and that life will always triumph over destruction. And whereas the incredible resilience of the people of Israel inspires us all to stand together in the face of adversity, showing that hope can and will prevail even in the darkest of times. And whereas the city is dedicated to supporting the land and people of Israel, particularly during these challenging times, and is committed to ensuring that future generations understand the importance of standing with those who seek peace and justice, now therefore, the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim, uh, October seventh, he has a typo, as Day of Remembrance of the October seventh massacre and subsequent Gaza War in the city of Sunny Hills Beach."
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So, the next item is three C, Discussion Regarding Monthly Progress Reports.
And I just wanna make sure that, considering the time, we're all okay with, to keep going, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm just, I brought this up because we have, um, certain issues that, um, carry over from month to month, and I'd just like to ask the city manager if he could, um, just give us updates regarding open items that are being worked on currently throughout the city.
Please.
Yes, I provide you all with a monthly report, where I try to list the highlights of everything that we're doing throughout the month, and some of the summary of some of our commission items. So, if there's anything that you would like me to add in addition to what I'm already providing, I'll gladly do that.
Okay, what, what were you, uh, looking to add?
So, um, regarding, let's say, Heritage Park, where we had discussed, um, changing, uh, the open areas to something else, is there any progress on that?
No, not right now. So, we're still, you know, finishing our budget discussions, but all of these kinds of things, we try to bring you in concept, and then go back and narrow the focus to bring you back specific items. So, it's a good example, but Heritage Park, we received some, I guess, general direction from you on what you would want to do with Heritage Park. Then we have to take that back, boil it down into specifics, but anything that we're going to do there ultimately comes back to you for approval. So, we're not gonna move forward with anything there without you seeing it first.
Right. But the reason I'm bringing this up is because we have really no timeframe on these things. So, it's just like kicking the can down the road, which is what I'm trying to avoid have happen, because then we don't accomplish anything for residents.
So, just to get clarification, and, uh, in addition to the, have you read the monthly reports?
Yes, sure.
Okay, so, do you think that they're comprehensive, or you think they're lacking?
There are, but there, well, there are certain things that are lacking.
Like, like what?
Such as what I just brought up.
I know, but I wanna be clear, so that we're giving exact direction to the manager, and it's not, you know, a vague idea. What specifically are you talking about? Like, capital improvement projects? Is that what you want?
Capital improvement projects, yes. What's occurring with the Center Island?
Okay, so capital improvement projects.
Cap, yes. And, uh, the parks, projects, whatever's, um, in progress, or, uh, ideas that should be moving forward that are not, things like that. Just so that we keep things moving, rather than just forgetting about them and time goes by, and we make no progress.
Okay.
So, I can include a, a separate section on the monthly reports that has a highlight for capital improvement projects and parks projects specifically.
Okay.
So, yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, next item?
Next item is three D, Discussion Regarding Increased Compliance of the Motorized Scooter Ordinance.
Yes, so, um, I just wanted to bring up whether, regarding enforcement, and I just see more and more, uh, kids riding without helmets. I just, I guess the parents just are not getting it, that it's a safety matter. I know we keep giving out helmets for free, but it's just, I don't understand it. But we need to either, uh, put out more information, it's just not getting through, or something that is not sinking in. I, so I don't know if it's-
What are you basing this on?
Enforcement that we need, just-
What, you see personally?
Yeah, seeing personally, and what other people see personally. People send me videos, uh, photos of kids riding tandem, um, kids riding with no helmets.
'Cause this summer, I've seen actually a substantial decrease in, in scooters, 'cause they're not going to the school, so it's hard to tell how much they're going to be doing now.
Well, just today, I saw a parent in Golden Shores, um, she was walking her dog, and her, uh, son was on a scooter with no helmet. And I said, I asked her, "Have you not gone to the helmet giveaways?" "Oh, I didn't know about it." And I said, "How could you not know about it? The city is constantly advertising, and we've had several helmet giveaways. So, please contact Sandra Block," I told her, "and, um, have your son have a helmet. It's just a safety matter, and I'm sure you would, you know, uh, if anything occurred, you would be happy that he had one on." So, she said, "Yes, but probably she won't do it."
Ultimately, people need to decide for themselves what's, what they need to do with their family and their, and their kids. We're not gonna be able to walk to every-
No, but I know, I know from, uh, people telling me that we, we have to do better at getting information out to people. I think it's, it's been a problem for a long time, uh, just the way we get information out to the residents, and I think we have to try to do better.
Okay, so in addition to the email blasts, the social media, the flyers?
You know, I'm not, I'm not a media expert, but the people that are, that, that we have in the city, I know they know how to do it better than they're doing. So, we have to try better.
Mr. City Manager?
I just wanna say that when we started the scooter enforcement, uh, process that you directed us to do, I had kinda given this over to the chief, who's done, exceeded my expectations on the scooter enforcement, and we've also involved Code, for example, as well as our media department, who I think has done an exceptional job. I, I made some notes of just the different things we've done, including, we've had a scooter rally in February, we've had scooter pop-up registration events, we had a registration at our Community Resource Night, like you mentioned, we've done numerous helmet giveaways. It's constantly been out there on our media department. We also, we even highlighted a section of road to delineate the difference between scooters and pedestrians. We have issued, I asked them for some numbers, so that I would be able to provide you, but we've issued through the P D over a thousand courtesy notices. And we've also issued from them a follow-up five-hundred-and-twenty warnings, and then we've given that over to Code, who has issued officially three-hundred-and-two warning notices. And we're now to the point where we've progressed it, we've issued our first couple of actual civil violation notices for penalties. So, the good news in all of that, as a result of all of those efforts, we've registered six-hundred-and-thirty-three scooters to date, which I think is a lot more than I thought it was gonna be. So, I'm, I'm very happy with that, and-
I think we probably have double that amount in the city.
I, we may. I mentioned it to the chief, um, I'm trying to think of what today is, Thursday, earlier in the week, and the chief took it on his own initiative, and we issued forty-one notices today at, at Back to School. So, we've really been proactive, and I've had to ask him to, is everything else, you know, being enforced, so we don't go so, um, so much, so enthusiastic on the scooters, but he's really made it proactive.
The red light cameras that we're having, uh, taking effect soon, are we blasting that enough?
That's not on the agenda.
No, it's just, no, 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 but this is-
It's not, it's not on the agenda, so we, we can't be discussing it.
I'm talking about giving notice to people for certain things.
But the agenda item is scooter enforcement. Um, so, if, you repeat that number, six-hundred and how many? Six-hundred and eighty-three, did you say?
Six-hundred and thirty-three scooter registrations.
That's a significant amount. If we look at the amount of, let's just say, we're assuming ma- most of these would be kids, and there are approximately seventeen-hundred to eighteen-hundred kids registered in the school.
And we also issued forty-one notices through the police department this morning. For Back to School, so we're really trying to educate, help the children. Like you mentioned, we have the free helmet giveaways, so we're really trying to
Yeah, I, I-
get the message out.
I think we continue to work with the school and the principal, and make sure that he knows, and, and pushes out any time we have a helmet giveaway. And I'm sure whoever got that notice this morning is not happy. Unfortunately, sometimes that's how other parents find out about it, because the person that got it tells everyone else how upset they are with the police. So, um, yeah, I, I, I mean, I support continuing this effort.
I think one small way we can, um, improve a certain, uh, the reg, increase the registration, now that the spot is up and running, and we're gonna have, uh, I'm sure teenagers showing up in their scooters, that we register them there, and that we only permit registered scooters to be parked there, or to be, you know, to enter those premises.
That's a good idea.
And then that way, we, you know, we snag a couple of more.
Okay.
Good.
All right, next item?
Next item is three E, Discussion Regarding Additional Speed Humps in Golden Shores.
Yes, so, we've clarified now that the fire department vehicles are not affected by the speed humps. It doesn't affect their efficiency.
We did not verify that. How did we verify that? We did not verify that, how did we verify that?
I was told that.
By whom?
I had a, a separate discussion, and I was told that did not affect their vehicles.
Okay, can you...
Or response time.
All right, well, I, this is the first time I'm hearing it.
Okay, so we can, we can call them back and ask them again. I thought that, um, when I had asked the question, it was said that, uh, they, they would not be against having additional speed humps earlier.
No.
You didn't hear that?
No.
Oh.
No, I think she said personally, she, she was, she doesn't like them and that, but, but I think the gentleman said that that's a question that would be referred to a different...
Right.
Fire prevention would have to...
Okay, so then we have to call them in next, so that we can absolutely clarify...
There's certain distances, the limitation on distances like he indicated, on grade, grade, because it has to be a certain grade, and then there's cer- there's a frequency of them that does affect response times, that's what looks in my experience, so that's something that he was referring to, fire prevention.
So we're continuing to do the research on the speed humps, right now, we're currently doing, uh, speed study in Golden Shores, we wanted to wait for the start of school so we could capture that data to figure out where the best possible locations could be for these, and if we do have a problem, I know that you all live there, but we're determining that through these speed studies.
Right.
So it, it is ongoing, but there's more than just, I guess overall the message is that there's a process that we need to follow in order to get these things done, and also we're subject to Dade County, uh, because ultimately they own that road in there, so...
I understand, but it's just, it's still a lingering issue as to who determined the 15 speed humps that are currently there, that they weren't placed, they were just basically placed in a haphazard manner, and because there is some areas that are just lacking so badly that it just makes no sense.
So we're continuing with that research, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, all right, next item?
Next item is 3F, discussion regarding a ride-share microtransit solution.
Okay, I, I was approached for, by this company that they wanna make a presentation, so I wanted to facilitate for them to do it, thank you.
One second, please, has staff seen this presentation?
I have not seen it, no.
Okay. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Um, did you not get this beforehand so that we can see it?
I haven't seen the full presentation, they sent it to the city clerk, they gave me a brief.
Yeah, we received it today.
Today?
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right, I just want to make sure everyone's okay with this, because we normally don't allow vendors to just come up and, and lobby us.
And just, a word of caution, if it's something that you ever would be, just, if it's something that would be procured through an RFP or something like that, just be mindful that you're receiving this information, but I, I wouldn't want to affect their ability to bid on it or anything like that, so...
What would affect their ability to bid?
I don't know, I'd have to look into it, but I don't, I don't know if it's something that the city would ultimately bid on, so I wouldn't want them to be out of the running for, probably not, but I, again, this is...
All right, so they, they take the, they take the risk?
Yes.
Okay, so just be warned that you take the risk of not being able to bid for anything that happens, so...
Okay.
Hi.
I would take the risk, that's all my life. Mayor Commissioners and Authorities of the city, good afternoon, and thank you for having me here today. My name is Leonardo Gagnon, I am a 10-year resident of Sunny Isles. I'm an industrial engineer, entrepreneur and CEO, and the founder of Magis, that is an end-to-end software platform solution for passenger transportation providers. Magis was created in Sunny Isles and operates in the US, Canada, Latin America, and we manage more than 1 million passengers and have processed ma- more than 15 million miles during our tenure. In the following minutes, I will introduce you our proposal of a microtransit initiative in the city of Sunny Isles that will benefit the community in affordable and accessible transportation for a diverse population, it will increase with the young population, the drivership, enhance mobility for older adults, reduction of the traffic and congestion that will have a huge impact with this system, adaptability and flexibility, and supporting tourism and boosting commerce in our city. The question is, are the current transportation options that we have are moving our community into the future, or are they leaving our residents behind? The current transportation solution based on fixed routing of diesel buses have proven inefficiencies, high cost and excessive CO2 emissions. The US Environmental Protection Agency and the Federal Transit Administration backed these affirmations. The data talk by itself, historically public tra- public transit has low ridership of less than 20 percent. There is a decrease in the use of the younger demographics and lack of on-demand or, uh, dynamic options. The proven solution of historical issues is a public on-demand microtransit system led by the cities and operated by private operators in a professional manner. The three main goals of a public microtransit solution are simplifying passenger engagement for residents and non-residents, and dramatically increase the ridership, to increase the safety of our community with W2 professionals and other safety functionalities provided by advanced technology, and reduce the carbon footprint. The highlight of micros, the microtransit initiative is that are that we will provide a world-class software platform to manage autonomically all business processes, a full service, easy to use ride requests using branded smartphone apps, WhatsApp, a web browser, and social media. All these using an on-demand request with standardized electric and hybrid-tried vehicles, safe, better than trained company drivers, zero or low emissions, and residents may have an e-resident card to, uh, to ride, uh, the service. We propose implementing a public on-demand microtransit system led by the city of the Sunny Isles Beach and operated by a private professional operator. The name that we put to the system is Sunny Flex, and the three main goals of our proposal is to provide our community with a flexible on-demand microtransit service with a simple way to request rides for residents and non-residents, and dramatically increase the ridership, to increase the safety of our community with W2 professionals and embedded, uh, safety procedures, and reduce the carbon footprint. The service that we propose includes six vehicles with easy access for passengers of all ages and a comfortable ride. The full fleet will operate two daily shifts, seven days a week, and three night shifts with a reduced fleet. The service will be for residents and paid for non-residents, that this is optional, we know that the municipality cannot, uh, charge the non-residents, but, uh, we have that option as well in our system. It also have a limited operative area and routing within Sunny Isles and its surroundings, we can, uh, geofence all the city in order not to allow pickups or drop-offs af- outside the city. Sunny Flex will be a public microtransit, uh, service with the following features, the Sunny Isles, uh, fully branded, it will be on-demand, easy to join, use and engage, and a professional service. The ride request will be performed from our omnichannel interface, giving passenger of all ages multiple channels of communications such as a mobile app, WhatsApp, a web browser, social media, you know that for young people today, social media is everything, they can request a ride through social media, and optionally, we can include a telephone operator on IVR for elder, uh, elderly people. Among other features, the city will be able to provide free rides to resident, uh, fostering resident registrations, and paid for free rides for non-residents within the city limits. Our proposal is to implement in two phases. Uh, in phase one, we propose a combined service with the current bus, uh, fixed routing with a geofence area, limiting the drop-off and pickup zones with, within the city limits, and also we activate two special routes, the north route to reach the Ventura Mall, Ventura Hospital, Moon Sinai, and the Bright Lake Station, Bright Line Station, and the south road, uh, to reach the FIU Biscayne Bay Campus. We can always add additional stops to these proposals because they are set up digitally. In the phase two, we propose what we call commingling, based on data from the first, uh, six months of operations, we can optimize the use of fixed routings and on-demand rides. Here are the proposed schedules, uh, we propose two shifts, uh, during the day, uh, seven days a week, and three shifts during the night, especially Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturday nights, reducing any, uh, reducing, increasing safety and reducing accidents in the, in the city. Based on our research, we see two fleet options, EVs and hybrid cars designed to be robust for microtransit operations, we designed the proposal with a total six vehicle fleet. The, for the EV options, we propose, uh, six Tesla X to cover all the shifts, the investment required is as follows, is one setup fee and 48, uh, monthly installments. Of course, depending on the amount of cars, amount of shifts, amount of, uh, we can discuss that and work with your people, uh, this could vary significantly. The second, uh, option, uh, for the hybrid option, we propose six Toyota Sienna hybrid autonomous cars. These autonomous cars are level three, uh, with pilot assistance, to cover only weekdays with daylight, daytime shifts, the vehicles, uh, have two configurations, is one five seats, uh, the first configuration is five seats, and the second configu- the second configuration is two seats and one wheelchair, and when the wheelchair is not inside the car, you can carry four passengers inside the car. We have partnered with Main Mobility, which is, uh, which provides autonomous vehicles, the company's based in Ann Harbor, Michigan, and operates in more than 10 cities in the US, one of which is Miami, they are currently operating in Daleen and, uh, City Hall, I think, uh, yeah, the sixth, civic center. The third option, we propose a combination of three Teslas and three Toyota Sienna hybrid autonomous cars, uh, to cover daytime shifts, nighttime shifts, and weekends as well. As a summary, uh, the propo- the proposal highlights are four month, 48-month agreement, an on-demand microsa- microtransit system for residents and non-residents, a branded mobility app, WhatsApp, web browser, social media, and optional phone, phone calls for ri- uh, for ride requests, W2-bated, uh, drivers, and yearly report of CO2 reductions. We analyze, we analyze, uh, the average cost per trip, reduction of microtransit systems in the US, and we can predict a reduction of 49 percent compared to traditional, uh, buses with fixed routed, if implemented with the solution in our city. Also, this chart includes a cost per trip comparison table for the Sunny Flex solutions versus Uber and taxi fleets. In conclusion, these are the main benefits, uh, for our community of the Sunny Flex microtransit solution, is affordable and accessible transportation for a diverse population, increase engagement with the young population, enhance mobility for older adults, reduce of traffic and congestion, and environmental impact, adaptability and flexibility, and support for tourism and boosting the commerce in our city. I'm excited about the potential to work together to transform the urban mobility in the city of Sunny Isles, our microtransit solution is not just a service, but a partnership with the community to build a more efficient, equitable, and sustainable transportation future. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to addressing any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Well, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay.
There's no further business.
All right, thank you.
And I would just note, just for the record, that, because it's been termed as a proposal, that it's made clear on the record that we're not accepting the proposal, we're not...
Yes.
We, we just...
Yes, and, um, are you a registered lobbyist?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sure, thank you very much. Okay, see you all at 6:30.
Thank you.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.